Good morning. Today is March 1st. We'll call to order the meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors. Please stand with me if you're able and say the question.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a motion to adopt today's agenda. So moves second. Side, face, so I. Now it's time for public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. If you would like to make a public comment, please step forward to the table or raise your hand on. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment number one. We have a proclamation recognizing March as National Women's History Month. Raise your hands. Would you like to start?
Sure.
Whereas women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. Whereas women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of the life of a nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home. And whereas women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by providing the majority of the voluntary labor force of the nation. And whereas women are particularly important to the establishment of early charitable, film, property, and cultural institutions in our nation. And whereas women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement and have served our country courageously in the military. And whereas women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, emancipation movement, industrial labor movement, civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all. That now therefore be it resolved that we, the Story County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim March 2022 as National Women's History Month. We take this as a time to celebrate the accomplishments and milestones of women all over the world. Do I have a motion to accept the proclamation?
I have a motion to accept the National Women's History Month proclamation. Second, I, face, so I. I believe we're going to take a photo. Do you know where Lucy is? Is she going to be here?
Take three. On the count of three. One, two, three. Yeah. Okay. One, two. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks for coming up.
Thanks, thanks.
I'm going to just kind of take us down a different route before we move on to agency reports and just share my, my thoughts and my concerns for the people of Ukraine today and my concerns about what's happening in there and I just needed to say that out loud because I don't know about everybody else, but my TV and my radio is on all the time thinking about the families that are being disrupted, the children that are being traumatized right now. And just my prayers that we can find this, a resolution quickly with as little damage as possible. Okay, moving on to agency reports. Do we, we have?
Yeah, it's not like there could be a couple other people also.
Okay.
If she shows up later.
I don't know if the B2R, unless one of them may be. Do we have anyone on Zoom from Racing Readers that would like to present the report? They just need to raise their. Just raise your hand, please. Okay. All right. Well, if they join us later, we'll come back to.
Writing up some of the reports.
Yeah, yeah, they do have a submitted report. Okay, moving on to consideration of minutes from February 22nd, 2022.
I approve all minutes as presented.
Second, heavens, I, face, so I. Consideration of personnel actions.
I approve all personnel actions as listed.
I'm second. Hi, face, so I. Consideration of claims.
I approve all claims listed.
My second. Heavens, I, face, so I. Consent agenda.
I approve of the consent agenda items as listed.
Second, heavens, I, face, so I. Right along. We don't have any public hearing items. Moving on to additional items. We have discussion and consideration of CDC's new recommendations for masking. So on Friday, CDC issued new guidance on the requirement to mask indoors. They're relaxing those requirements. So, and we talked about it at our department head and elected official meeting also. So I, I am open to, you know, any, any thoughts you have. I did contact Mary Greeley and just get input from them because one of, one of the things in the guidance was to make sure that you're checking with your local medical providers and hospitals to ensure that their census is down and that they, they're not overwhelmed and Mary Greeley is doing really well right now. They've got very few COVID patients and no staff out ill, so they were very comfortable with where Story County is, all the communities around in Story County. I mean, I know that I checked with names. I know that they, with their requirement yesterday, they had a special meeting. You know, along with the, this whole process, and I know it's been a long process for everybody, but we said we were going to follow the CDC requirements and their recommendations. And I feel like that's what we we stuck to and that's been our justification for why we had masking and with their recommendation for data and the additional information you found from the hospital as well, then it makes sense that we continue to, you know, look at their recommendations. Now that doesn't mean there should be a huge spike going on within the county that something else couldn't be re-instituted. But I also think that folks have been doing a really good job in our community right now, but it's, it's heading on the right path. And that we could live with this requirement at this time. That sounds good. Alyssa, I know there are a few things that, would you mind coming forward just to reiterate for for the, for county ladies.
So, you know, we want to make sure that if people do want to wear masks or, or face covering, that they feel comfortable doing that, they, they can do that. Some will do that because they have people at home or they're more susceptible to this illness. The other thing is, is if we do, if the employee does test positive, in order to come back after a five day of isolation, they are required. It's still CDC guidance. Your medical provider still, that's our recommendation if they want to go back to work after five days, they're feeling better, fever free. The mask is required for five more days. So we would still do that. We're still following CDC guidance for any isolation or quarantine purposes. So that this, you making this change would change that.
Right. Yep. Thank you. Yeah, and I do just want to say thank you to everyone. I know it's been a very long haul and everyone is tired of the masks. And I just appreciate everyone being considerate and concerned about their neighbor and about the, the people that they work with and interact with every day. It's about keeping yourself safe and keeping other people safe. And so I do hope that if people have someone at home that they're, they're concerned about protecting or they're concerned about themselves, that they will feel comfortable continuing to wear a ma- wear a mask if, if that's, you know, if that's important to them. So I, I am ready to move forward to work. So I would make the motion that we lift our masking mandate for the. I would second that. I, face, so I. Thank you. And then Jovi will just go ahead and get the signage down for those.
What was that? I didn't quite hear you.
The, the signage in the building.
Yeah, I will just pull the signage down and, I mean, I think we got dispensers at the front entries. I think we should just leave them in case somebody wants to throw one on. We got a pretty good supply of face coverings, but we'll remove the signage that requires it. Pretty quick and easy.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh.
When I come up here with that stuff. Okay.
Okay, so, request of proposals for architectural engineering design services related to HVAC equipment.
Yes, for the Human Services Center. Yeah, this is one of our RFP projects. It is, it's in FY '23's budget. But due to delays for equipment, would like to get the RFP out early so that we can get started on the design so that hopefully we can have a a better timeline for getting equipment because, you know, we're doing a similar project at the Justice Center and we're roughly about a year behind because we're struggling to get equipment manufactured, so. And I, I talked with Lisa Markley about moving it ahead and she said that's not a problem since it's part of the RFP funds, so. Pretty typical RFP, similar to the one we did for the Justice Center. Say, specific questions you have about it. Ethan from, Ethan Anderson from the Attorney's Office has reviewed it and he's comfortable with it.
The only thing I have, because I noticed two different dates, so it says under, and that first page, you have the proposal deadline, you have 12 P on Central San Stein, part 28th, 2022. And then on the last page, our, for prior, it's like, yeah, on 23rd, March 25th. So are you wanting it 28th or 25th? Or are you just saying you prefer it earlier than 25th, if you haven't, that's the only thing.
Which page?
Okay, sorry, page four of mine, under the middle. Sorry.
Um, that's for the.
For the site visit?
So we'll have it actually.
Yeah.
It should be the 15th.
Yes, that should be March 15th. March 15th, because that references the RSV keying to the mandatory site visit block. So yes, that, yeah, so that date, yeah, should be March 15th, not the 23rd. Good kiss.
Yeah.
Three of us missed it.
Yeah.
Well, I was thinking it was supposed to be consistent with the 28th, so I was wrong.
Well, I mean, but it, we found it. It don't matter how we got there, we found it, so.
So, yeah, that's, that's related to the high sign there, but. Yeah. And my only question was just that, you know, that even have a chance to look it over and great. I think it's good to get a jump on it.
Yeah, it's, things are getting better, but it's still, I mean, especially with that many pieces of equipment, then it's not near as many as the Justice Center, but still, just getting the ball rolling as soon as we can is, is going to help.
Any other questions? I go make a motion to approve the request of proposal, architectural and engineering design services related to the heat duct segment replacement at the Center. With that, one little date change.
Yep. Okay.
I would second. Heavens, I, face, so I. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have consideration of employment contract buyout for Park Ranger Olivia Vanderhart with Blackhawk County Conservation. We have Mike. Morning, Mike.
Hi, can you hear me?
Can, thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Sorry for the delay there. Well, good morning. This, this contract that you have in front of you is, is for entering a, I should say, entering a contract with Olivia Vanderhart. We're pleased to have Olivia join us from Blackhawk County to come to Story County to join us as a park ranger. So we had a lot of very good applicants for that, for that position and really pleased to be able to have Olivia join us. She did as typical for any park ranger, most park rangers, she entered an employment contract with her employer at that time, sponsor at that time, to go through the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy. That contract required a four-year payback and if she left employment with Blackhawk prior to that, we entered the same contracts with our Rangers as we put them, put them through the academy. So it's, it's typical for agencies, if, if, if the employees transfer agencies within that contract period to consider buying out that contract and then entering a contract subsequently with that employee for the remainder of that term. So that's what we're advocating here, requesting that, that you approve entering that contract with Olivia and paying Blackhawk County the balance of her contract there. Any questions?
And my only question is, do you have the funds within your budget to buy that out as an unbudgeted item?
It is. It's unbudgeted because this isn't something that we, not something that we anticipated. Overall, it's a, it's a net savings because we, it would cost us significantly more than that to send people through the academy. So overall, we're saving. Do we have it available in the budget right now? Kind of have to wait to see as we get closer to year end if, if, how we're doing in the budget. If it's, if it's possible for us to absorb that or if we're going to need to ask for an amendment.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, that, that was, that was my only question and, and I know the county attorney's office has had a chance to, to review the contract as well, correct?
Yes.
I don't have any additional questions.
I cannot, I do not.
I make a motion to approve the employment contract buyout for Park Ranger Olivia Vanderhart with Blackhawk, Blackhawk County Conservation for $5,612 and $56,000.
I would second. Heavens, I, face, so I. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
And we're able to get that spot filled so quickly.
Yeah, it is nice. It is nice. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Thanks. You too.
And moving on to departmental reports, we have Jovi again. Good to have you back.
Yeah, it's good to be here. All right, quarterly report time. With letter work orders closed and all calls pretty average for us. Some of the key things that we've been doing this last quarter is space needs assessment is near completion. I'm looking to have the, what they're calling the 95% completed report to me the 18th of this month, so. The plan is, is they'll get it to me. I'll get it out to all the elected officials and department heads and then we'll look to schedule a work session to kind of go over that, so. Looking forward to that being completed, so. Been a long time coming, so. And we got a maintenance tech offer accepted. Looking to have them start 21st of this month. It's, his name's Wade Ames. Wife Cassandra works in county attorney's office, so we're pretty excited about that. That'll get us up to full staff. Been short staff for three months, so. That's good. We, back to having monthly staff meetings. We stopped those when COVID hit and two months ago, we started, starting having those again, so that's been nice. It's, it's tough, but to get us all together. But we shifted some of our shift hours around. Got second shift coming in early, so we have a have an hour and a half overlap between the two shifts now, so that helps. So it's easier for us to get together and kind of go over what's happening and it's working real well. Keeps everybody in the loop, so.
Right.
Yeah, helps they bring up, you know, gives them a chance to, you know, things they see in their day-to-day work that they can bring in, you know, and discuss solutions for it. So it's really helping get some good information, so.
And those, those staff members whose shifts got made a little bit earlier, are they, are they enjoying that?
Yeah, for the moment, you know, I mean, I'd say the majority of them were really excited about it because it gets them out of here. The second shift gets them out of here a little bit earlier. You know, there's a couple that had to do some scheduling, you know, got children and stuff, but they worked through it and now that they've got a new routine, it's, they seem, everybody seems to really be liking it now. So, you know, some of it kind of changing some habits because, you know, before, you know, the majority of everybody was gone by the time they got here. So kind of coming up with that, you know, new routine of, okay, I can do these areas and these, you're also. Some of them kind of like to have every day the same, so it took them a, you know, a couple of weeks to, to make that transition, but it, it seems to be working pretty well. We got RFP out and got two responses back for the front counter barriers for here and engineers and animal control, so plan to have that recommendation in front of the board next Tuesday. Moving on that, had our annual fire building code inspections for our Nevada facilities, including McFarland Park, and it was very excellent report, just a handful of minor issues. We did the City of Ames Fire and Building Inspector did the group homes yesterday. We'll be doing the Human Services Center tomorrow, so. Get that official report after he finishes the Human Services Center, but the group homes come back with, once again, just a couple of minor minor housekeeping items in the basement for the tenant, but nothing major, so I'm anticipating HSC will probably be in that same category. Yeah, we've been doing a lot of cable polling. That's what most of the staff, the maintenance tech staff's been doing now at the Justice Center and that's for the big HVAC project as we've transitioned over to a new modern building automation system that's fully networked, so each piece of equipment requires its own network cable. So we bought some specific network switches for that. We have our own facilities networked that all that equipment resides on and then we, along with that, we had to put in some Wi-Fi access points so that we could get we've got tablets that, so when we work on them, we can manipulate the equipment as they troubleshoot it and work on it. Yes, it's nice. It's been a long project. We've been working on the full upgrade for almost three years now. Yeah, it's a lot of new hardware, new software, got some training to do on it, but.
Yeah, I didn't understand really all what was involved until I read the RFP and all of the networking and I was, I was really interested to read all of that.
Yeah, it, it basically comes down to it's, it's a software based, well, it's it's internet-based, so to speak, but you can get on designated workstations like my computer and access it and you can see every piece of HVAC equipment we have in all the major buildings and change set points, you know, schedules, you know, like, you know, for example, like when COVID hit and we changed how often our fresh air units run so that they run more often. Well, that made it a lot simpler having the new system. You can send, you could just do the schedule in one spot at one time and it handles, sends that program out to every piece of equipment. So some of it, you know, we also use it for some lighting controls that Human Services Center and we occupancy sensors, like, you know, this room we're sitting in. The HVAC behaves differently when the room is occupied versus when it's unoccupied, so. That's tied into it. Monitors, that system also monitors a fire alarm system so that we get different notifications if the fire alarm goes off. It did Saturday.
Oh, really?
This building, yeah, Saturday evening malfunctioning smoke detector, but so we get that immediate notification as soon as it goes off, so. Yeah, the automation system, it, it really helps with, you know, it kind of plays into our geothermal system really well because with the different schedules and how we can manipulate space temps when they're unoccupied, occupied and, and do things kind of all encompassing instead of going through to each individual piece. Having those scheduled setbacks that helps with the energy costs lowering up so that we only run the equipment when we need to run it. But yeah, I mean, our old system was 25 years old. It just wasn't supported anymore, so. Yeah, and then we, some of the things we did was added cell phone signal boosters at the Justice Center and that's a kind of place into it's also how we, our maintenance techs and our custodians receive notifications. These are cell phones. So yeah, there's a lot of dead spots, so. We added, added those to keep all the phones and the tablets that we use for the HVAC equipment because they'll run off either Wi-Fi or cell signal, so. Keeps everything connected at all times. It's kind of the gist of it, you know, a lot of normal day-to-day stuff, our routine maintenance and preventative maintenance and just the work orders that come up. Quick rundown. Questions if you got any for me?
I, I don't have any questions, but I did print off the letter that, that we received from Ray Reynolds at City of Nevada, just praising, just to the rooftops, the work of your, your team. He was beyond pleased with everything that he saw and had nothing but, but fantastic things to say about, about you, about your staff. So I did want to just make sure that I said, thank you, and, and brought it up at the meeting today because I think it, it's what we all know already that you, you and your team do a fantastic job taking care of all of our buildings, but it, it, it means a lot to hear that from another agency. So I wanted to say thank you. The Fire Inspector. Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
So thank you for the
Thank you for recognizing us, yeah, it's, it's the team.
Yeah, yeah.
They do an excellent job, they really take pride in what they do, they care, that's the big thing. So, yeah.
And that shows in, in many different ways, it shows, so. Please, thank you for us.
Will do, thank you.
Thank you. We don't have any other reports, any upcoming agenda items? Now is the time for public comment number two, comments from the public on items not on this agenda. The board may not take any action on the comments due to requirements of open meetings law, but may do so in the future. If anyone would like to make a public comment, please raise your hand on Zoom or star nine on the phone, where you can step forward to the table. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment number two. Based on assignments, committee meeting updates and announcements. They're not, oh, is that Carrie? I just want to make sure, is anyone on, on the line from Racing Readers? Raise your hand. I just want to recognize a couple of those, just want to double check. Yeah, that would be great. Yeah, so I have a CICS transition meeting this afternoon. Tomorrow, I have a, I'm to, for the board meeting, just a short one with a issue that was, or a RFP that we may have to approve or like from our regular, regular times. Thursday, I have the, I guess it's the candidate harassment training that we need to go through, we have a sheriff's recognition. And I'm hoping to, I'll be into the bipartisan infrastructure, blog, epic roads, bridges and major beauties webinar afternoon. Friday, I've got several meetings actually over eight, also for the names for the day, I've got a community health steering committee meeting. Planning a change of lipstick update and then I have a input session on Iowa State's strategic plan. So today I've got two different boost meetings, one at 3:00 and then one at 5:30. Thursday, I've got harassment training, sheriff's recognition and alternatives, arrest version meeting, I'm hoping to join the bipartisan infrastructure bill meeting as well. Friday, I have Story County, criminal health and criminal justice task force and then the Ames Chamber legislative update. Well, if there's one other thing on my calendar that's not on my calendar, which makes me a little nervous, but that's what I Yeah, and then, I believe, Linda is back tomorrow or Thursday? I think she was Thursday. It's either Thursday or Friday. It wasn't George station, gave an office. And then, one last thing is, just to remind everyone that Roland Story has their, has a special election today. Polls are open until eight, and if you have any questions, you can contact the auditor's office. I, face all I, you're adjourned, thank you.